To the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I'd like to introduce Mr. McNamara Superintendent, he will give a presentation on the budget proposals.
Thank you.
Maybe if the board wants to, we could go down and sit down in front here and we could just participate in that perspective.
There's copies of the presentation in front of you, but I'll be using the projector.
So, good evening everyone, and thank you very much for joining us. I am pleased to present the proposed budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year for Regional School District Number Eight, which supports the vision of the district and aligns with the commitments identified in the district's current strategies. The proposed budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year is thirty-one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-one, representing the overall budget increase of two point eight five. This amount is a combination of a net operating budget of thirty million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one, and a capital budget of five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Several factors contributed to the proposed budget that I will highlight throughout my presentation. Since the initial presentation of the proposed 2023-24 budget in January of 2023, the administration has worked closely with the Board of Education to make reductions for the proposed budget. Five hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars has been removed from the 2023-24 budget through the following steps. Three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars of surplus funds from the 2021-2022 budget have been allocated to pay for items and services originally in next year's budget. The board voted also to make pre-purchases totaling eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars, using funds from this current fiscal year budget. Both of the surplus funds from 2122 and the funding from this year's budget for pre-purchases were available for use due to the district's strong financial oversight. By using these funds in this manner, we are reinvesting funds back into each of the towns and reducing our budget increases next year. This reinvestment has made a significant contribution to reducing next year's budget. This idea has been discussed and shared with each one of the three towns, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrators, and was supported by each one of the towns. Finally, positions that were originally in next year's budget, one of the first proposed in January of 2023, have either been eliminated or reduced. Those reductions total almost seventy-seven. The member town levy for each town is provided on this slide. As you can see, Andover is realizing a significant reduction while Hebron is seeing an increase over past years. This is a result of a shift in enrollment, which impacts the percentage of each town member, that each member town contributes. While Marlboro's percentage of the levy is remaining consistent, Hebron's has increased by the two percent reduction that is being. This chart shows the distribution of an operating budget by category. As you can see, all object categories have been increased with the exception of tuition costs, which have increased by just about six percent. This chart shows the distribution of the proposed budget by percentage of each object category in relation to the total budget. As you can see, seventy percent of the proposed operating budget is allocated to employee salaries and benefits. These are fixed costs associated with staff and their school. The increase is associated with personnel and the health insurance costs and contractual salary increases are provided on the slide. The district has made a concentrated effort over the past several years to ensure that salaries and benefits for employees are competitive. Salary increases for the different bargaining groups are fair and less than per inflation cost. One of the things that I noted on the slide is inflation over, from December twenty-two to December twenty-three increased by six and a half. As you can see, the contractual salary increases are well below where inflation at the S R certified staff, three point two four percent, non-certified staff for four point forty-eight percent, and administration of three point one one percent. Again, those are fixed costs that are coming through the negotiation process, getting fair increases for our staff. We want them to be competitive. The health insurance increase of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars is a two point five percent, five percent increase over what we are currently paying for health insurance costs. The percentage that was identified for an increase of premium costs is a one point five percent increase of premium costs. But again, because of the enrollment change with the enrollment shift, it's a two point five percent, two point five percent seven percent impact on our current. So this slide highlights some of our budget drivers. We have our C E D decrease in revenue projections. We have an increase in financing and lease costs. We have an increase in the cost for natural gas, increase in the cost associated with software, and an increase in custodial supplies. I'll just mention to our board members that are here in the public that may remember our budget drivers, like January twenty-third meeting was substantially greater than this because a number of items, requirements, or putting in a budget. All of those drivers decreased, taken out on next year's budget because of the use of surplus funds and pre-purchases. Again, really good readouts in our resources. Next slide. So next year's budget does include a position that will focus on instructional practices and coordination of curriculum revision and development. Having a full-time staff member focused on improving instructional practices and ensuring that the district's curriculum is current and aligned with state and national standards is imperative for maintaining rigorous, well-rounded academic office. This would be a full-time teaching position that works closely with teachers as well as district administration in supporting the improvement of instructional practices and curriculum model. The position will also work closely with teachers, department coordinators, and administration, and revision. A stipend would be associated with a position that is similar to what's paid to department coordinators for taking on additional work and responsibilities. There's staff reductions that had already been made. This position would essentially be F T E. Another addition to the budget is the inclusion of the summer school credit recovery program. It looks at inflation of summers. It has been a very successful program and it will continue to be valued for ranked students who may be impacted by the new saved acquired credit increase for graduation. With the conclusion of S R funds to pay for this program, the costs associated with continuing and high impact to our public. And finally, we have the end position, which has been in our, which has been in existence for the past few years. Again, this was something that has been grant funded. The L P M supports health offices in both schools and it has also helped us reduce spending on substitute nurses when it can be registered nurse staffs. The budget includes reductions to two, these are positions that we had already identified back in January that we were going to reduce. The first one was a district-wide instructional technology coach, the individual who's sort of now. The library media specialist is able to adequately support teachers and their needs with regards to technology integration in his role as a library media specialist. So the position has not been included in next year's budget. And then the point five F T E family into the science teacher position that was also in our current budget, has also been eliminated. The position was not able to be filled due to a lack of qualified applicants in the anticipation of saying then, and therefore. As I had indicated earlier, the two positions that are being reduced in the budget since January are is the full-time one point zero world language teacher. Well, actual therapists, the one point zero C F T. Those reductions are able to be done because of the fact that. And the reduction of national therapists, our showing from one point oh to a point eight F T. It's really based on. So as you can see from this chart of adopted budgets from the past few years, the district has demonstrated history of good fiscal responsibility. Like other school districts across state that are impending with rising costs, the proposed budget can be de-aged, which corresponds to our current financial climate. I'll go off script a little bit and say that I think that if you look at the current landscape of budget increases of all school districts, municipalities in our region and across the state, I would be hard pressed to continue the budget that two point five percent, two point eight five percent could be coming in at a real and solid number. Next slide. So when comparing Reginate to other regional school districts that are. Districts, RAM ranks among the lowest for people to see. Through this year, as you can see. As you can see from this graph, enrollment after the end of this is projected to. It's a wrong one. This graph is enrollment since twenty fifteen, as well as the projected enrollment through the twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three school year. For the October twenty-two reports to say the district enrollment was one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight, and as you can see, current projections indicate that enrollment increased since the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, before increasing to numbers of our current ten years. This chart shows enrollment after middle school, and you can see that it is projected to remain steady for the next several years before beginning to increase by the final school year. RAM is projected to decline in enrollment, or students in the increase from the middle school. So one of the things that has been widely discussed in our area is the increase in elementary enrollment, primarily in Hebron School District. It is important to note that over the next ten years, the elementary districts seating in the RAM are projected to increase their combined enrollment. This increase in elementary enrollment will significantly ensure that the district remains prepared to meet the need of that group seat population. This shows that elementary enrollment in twenty thirty-two, thirty-three continues to trend. We'll get updated enrollment projection through next second. We'll have a better sense of where we're going to go from here, but we're setting up. As the buildings and grounds continue to age, it is important that we plan for the ongoing upkeep of the facilities as well as directing numerous capital projects that need attention to ensure the students, staff, and the community have a safe and accessible facility to use. So for our capital improvement budget, it's five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety, nine hundred and ninety dollars. It's supposed for next year and it represents a small percentage of the current needs identified. The prioritized committees requested for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as recommended by the Board of Education Facility Subcommittee. The prioritized lists and the associated costs were also reviewed and discussed in a joint meeting between the facilities and finance subcommittee. And they include projects such as chimney restoration, repairs to sidewalks, curving, and cement cracks, parking lots, and a few. Next slide we do there, which is four of them. The capital budget also includes funds to have a building evaluation report completed to update a capital plan. The last evaluation that was done on our facilities was done in twenty fifteen, so it's a refreshed look to get a better sense of where our primary. Next slide. So the proposed, the proposed budget presented reflects the efforts of the board, the district and school administration, department coordinators, and staff for it. Budget that remains, that maintains a high-quality educational program in the facilities the RAM community has come to its step, as well as the social, emotional needs of our students. It is the result of several works, collaboration between the board, school, and district administrators, and SEP, and is intended to provide local officials and the general public with clear understanding of the district's programs and priorities. The administration and staff of Regional School District Eight are grateful for the support of the Board of Education and the communities of Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, to help ensure that our students are receiving high-quality education, which requires them to make meaningful contributions to the SEP. As you can see from this slide, I've done separate presentations, we've done separate workshops. I've met with each of the board of finances, the board of selectmen. So it's totally based on what I presented as favorable, favorable group seats. And I am recommending the Board of Education adopt this proposed budget.
This time we don't open it up to questions, both physically present as well as online.
There's a, Mr. McNamara is right behind you. And if there's people online, if there's people online that. Yeah, it's a great question. So the two, one of the, one of the specific positions, the other one is for a brand new. She's called T C D. So the L P N. Even if I miss. So from hours. The L P N was. And it's not uncommon when you. So the L P N. To use their records for all health assistance, support resources, was the time to incite the medical school. They provide medical support. They allow the nurses to be able to be out of the office when they need to. That's something that may come out of our office and head office still in hand. And the other thing that I mentioned about the health plan is that that position also enables us not to have to kill or substitute nurses. Chances that one of the friendship nurses is not here to actually help them to go down publicly. It's the middle school, the L P N, we're down in public with this lot of folks. And because you have a lot of place, we're probably in the support of our partners to have public. So again, it's one of the things that you. You said it. Should we have a place to burn, burn the fire? The somebody who was. Program is already. The issue had a learning loss. And then we have hundreds. It is students to. Being loaded from one year to next. Question, question, sophomore, sophomore. Then. It would be maybe is it able to every man. And that. Again, it's something that we recognize. Our benefit will continue to break down. There's also going to be an increase next year for a number of credits that require official graduation, which we know will place a further stretch of our students in these. This budget does appear to be very reasonable. It's for.
Any questions or like to give public comment? Please raise your digital hand or make yourself known. All right. All right, having had an opportunity to. Entertain any questions or comments regarding these two proposals, I would like, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? Hearing none will do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that passes and we are adjourned. Carrie, I don't believe she's able to participate tonight. Joe Coletti?
Here.
Mary? Mary was a bit, we'll either, Sue?
Sue Stoffey Marlboro.
Thank you. Heather?
Heather Summer Hebron.
Great, thank you. Pam, I don't believe was able to participate tonight. Mike?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Great. Did Gabe join us online?
Yep, Gabe Marks Hebron.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric Shavchenko Andover.
Great, thank you. And Kirsten?
Kristen Earlson Andover.
Great, and I'm Mike Morris from Hebron. All right, so we will, if we could, just stand for the pledge of allegiance one more time?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moves us on to item three. If you'll bear with me for a moment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of comments presented. So at this time, if there's anyone that's physically present that would like to give public comment, we'll entertain that at this point. Okay, seeing none, I would turn to our digital participants. Is there anyone online that would like to give public comment? Eric, I want to rely on you. No digital hands? All right. So that being the case, we will move on to item four, which is discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed capital improvement budget. So what I would like to do is get the motion on the floor if that's possible, and then if there's a discussion, then we can certainly raise it at that point. So I would entertain a motion at this point that the board adopt the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital improvement budget in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Mike Shroen made the, made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I got Heather out here first, so Heather's seconded it. We'll do a voice vote. I'm sorry, we'll entertain discussion. Is there any discussion at this point? Anyone online as far as board members? None? Anyone? The only thing I'll throw out there is that I really appreciate all the work that the facilities group and in conjunction with the finance group has done. The joint meetings as well as the individual meetings to prioritize the things that go into the capital budget. It's, that's, I've been on the, the. Capital improvement end of things and it's tough choices to be made amongst many things that need to get done, and I do appreciate all the effort that you guys do in prioritizing and making sure that we're putting the money forward in the, the most feasible way that we can. So with that being said, at this point, I will actually.
You got one.
Thanks. Actually do a roll call vote. So Carrie? Not present. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary? Sue?
Yes.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes.
Pam? Not present. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. Kirsten?
Yes.
Thank you. And I also vote yes. That motion passes with eight votes.
Start.
Oh, Mary joined, Mary.
Oh, Mary joined. Great. Mary, did you want to vote?
Well, I didn't know, I couldn't vote because I didn't hear what the motion was. I'm sorry.
She didn't hear the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion was to adopt the proposed capital twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital improvement budget in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand dollars, nine hundred, five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Yes, please.
All right, great, thank you. So that vote, that motion carries with nine votes. All right, great. Moves us on to item five, which is discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed operating budget. Again, I'd like to put the motion on the floor and then conduct any discussion as necessary. At this time, I would entertain a motion that the board adopt the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating budget in the amount of thirty million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Heather made the motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second, Sue.
Sue.
Sue, thank you, Sue. All right, is there any discussion about this budget? Anyone online? Questions or comments? Anyone present? Okay, so similarly, one comment I'm going to make is that this budget went from four point.
Four point eight.
What's that?
Four point nine six.
Four point nine.
Four point nine six to two point eight five, and it didn't get that way by accident. It got that way by a lot of hard work, both on the, the, from the, through a ground swell up as far as our, our faculty and staff providing information and working together to put together, I think, what is a very reasonable and feasible, workable number. And then handing that off to our administrators, who I think did a phenomenal job in putting together and prioritizing the things that need to be prioritized in order to keep us moving in a very difficult financial year. and prioritizing the things that need to be prioritized in order to keep us moving in a very difficult financial year. And I'd be extremely remiss if I didn't mention all of your work even and everything that you've done on this. It's incredibly helpful, and we rely on you, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Similarly, from the board's perspective, the finance committee, exceptional work in trying to move things forward. We couldn't have gotten done the things that brought it down from the four percent range to the two point eight five percent range without the finance committee putting all that time and energy and effort and making some really reasonable and important decisions that, that set the board up for success. So again, thank you very much for all of that. That all being said, we'll do a voice vote, and we'll go back around the horn. Carrie? Still not here. Joe?
Yes.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Thanks, Pam? Not here. Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That also passes with nine votes. All right. That brings us to item six, which is again the public comment, and I will just ask you to bear with me one more time. Hebron Andover Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside, so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this point, again, is there anyone physically present that would like to give comment? I get a no? Okay, is there anybody online that would like to make public comment? I'm going to lean on you, Eric. Anybody? No digital hands being raised at this point. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
I got a motion from Mike. Is there a second? Heather made a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, very much.